All right, we'll open the meeting. We have adding an agenda item to Water and Sewer Commission, Pat Lee Drive Replacement. We're adding, we already have a personnel executive session matter on the agenda and we have to add one more personnel. Is there any other need to amend the agenda from anyone? All right, can I have a motion?
So, select.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we have select board minutes of September 17th, including Water and Sewer, and then special select board minutes of September 24th. Does anybody see any errors?
Yeah. Dan and I weren't at the 17th, but Dan seconded an amendment on the back page.
That would be difficult.
Motion by T. Hooker and seconded by Dan Evans to go into executive session.
De Mills.
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 Oh, wait, which third or second, oh, here. It was changing on one foot, all right.
Had to be David.
That was the only thing I saw.
Well, no, good for picking that up, because I didn't. I was always off your sign next to it. Sign page. Okay. Insurance Town Manager's Report.
I helped with the Senior Wellness Fair and Luncheon at the Pittsburgh Rec on September 18th. It was a well-attended event that was partially sponsored by the Southwest Vermont Council on Aging. September 18th, I had a telephone conference with RHAR, our audit firm, to finalize their in-house dates and answer questions in preparation for the audit. They are recommending that we add an outstanding check policy. I'll be bringing that to you hopefully within the next couple of meetings. They can start the in-house audit today.
Oh.
So, we're working right through the list with them. Ashley Forrest did come see me on September 22nd to do a follow-up check-in on her property. She's still working towards cleaning up her property more and removing the campers. She's had some difficulties with that. We've had several people reach out to us with wells that are drying up due to the drought. Please be aware that our fire department cannot deliver water to these. Call the health officer, and it's also on our agenda tonight. There are two water accounts that were shut off due to delinquency. We had many payment agreements done at the last moment to avoid water shut-offs. I really strongly urge citizens to make payment agreements when the bills come out to avoid the expense of water shut-offs. Each water shut-off notice we send, it's costing about $15, and that's not including labor. That's just all the postage and paper. It's getting to be very expensive. So if we can cut down on that cost.
Does that roll into what they owe them?
No.
We should. It's a statutory. Is it?
Statutes again.
So.
Help us with that.
The quarterly billing did go out. Some of them went in the mail today, some will go out in the mail tomorrow. They're going to be due November 4th, and that's our first quarterly billing. While Jepson from Cedar has released information for small business grants available up to $25,000, I have information available if any small businesses are interested in applying for the 50/50 match grants, and these are facility-based projects. The deadline for this is October 15th. I do have the information, and I'm more than willing to sit down with anybody that has a small business that's interested in this. I attended the TAC meeting September 25th. There are four potential grant opportunities right now for highway departments. It looks like two of them, Better Roads and Systemic Local Road Safety Program Grants, are the two that we'll likely be applying for that we have a need. Rich and I are working on a dog complaint issue, and we will be bringing the animal control ordinance back to the board in the future after Rich has listened to a couple of court cases with dogs, and we would like to firm up some things to make them with a little bit more teeth to them in court.
Sounds good.
All right, may I have any questions for Dan?
Oh, do you want me?
I think we should.
Okay. We just want to let the public know that Helen McKinley's out on medical leave right now, so if they're noticing her absence, it's a medical leave.
Okay. Thank you. Any select board remarks? Nope. Any public comment?
Just on the Cedar loans, those are projects for like $40,000 and above.
Nope.
We applied, and we were told our project was too small.
Not via the information I got, so it might be a different program, because this one was just released. I can give you the information.
Maybe, because we spoke with him, and he told us our project was too small.
Because it's going to be as small as buying an oven, so that's why I'm confused.
That's interesting, yeah, because he made no mention of that.
Through regional?
Huh?
Through regional?
No, this is through Cedar.
Yeah, maybe it was a different one, or, but we always talk into that.
Yeah, because we had asked if there was anything, and they were like, "What's your project?" And we told them, and it was like, everything is for like bigger projects. I think for our project, we could have gotten like $200 and something dollars.
It might be a different program, so I'll send you the information.
Okay.
Follow-up on, I was notified on the first week of August that a letter was delivered to the Dollar General, referenced their non-compliance with their permit as pertaining to their lighting, and it's been almost two months and no change. Lights are on 24 hours a day. They're supposed to be contained, they're supposed to be contained on their property, and they are not.
Yeah, okay.
A couple of questions. Who issued the permit for them? Was it the, is that a town permit, a state permit?
No, it was the state. It ended up being through.
Environmental Court.
So does a town have any power in making them comply with it?
We do, yeah. Yes.
You notice they've upgraded.
What is the penalty if they don't? It's been three and a half years.
No, I know. I don't know what the penalty is.
We wrote that in the last letter we wrote them, didn't we?
Yeah, we did.
About the lights also?
Yeah, it was in there as well.
Lights and the.
That's been an ongoing.
It's been since day one.
Yeah, but I thought they, I thought they did something to improve the lighting at like at some point.
They have done nothing.
They were told they did.
They have done nothing. All their Dollar Generals have boxes around the lights that are in the parking lot.
Yeah.
And the lights that are on the buildings are all hooded and point down.
Okay.
Not out across everybody's property and into windows.
Right, right.
And they've done nothing. And their garbage area has got a little privacy fence.
Yeah.
Their garbage is everywhere but behind it.
Oh, jeez.
It's everywhere. I've got photographs of it, it's been taken for years, and, you know, it's pretty unsightly back there.
All right.
So did the letter come from Jeff? Came from Ann?
Came from Ann.
But it didn't include the garbage situation?
I don't know, yeah.
It did not include the garbage. It included the landscaping, the lights.
It did just address the landscaping.
And I reached out to Dollar General themselves, plus the overarching umbrella company, and two others. One of them was the landscaping company that does their landscaping.
And they have upgraded the landscaping stuff. They did.
Yeah, after asking though for.
Yeah.
And maybe you should give them one last call and say if the lighting issue isn't rectified, and we've been notified of a garbage problem, we're just gonna.
Take legal action.
Yeah.
We're just gonna call Act 250 and start another. Because that'll, that'll, I mean, we consider writing a letter to the Enforcement Division of Act 250 now, because that's the only place to put any teeth in. Yep.
Yeah, so let's just do that, and they've been in violation for forever.
Over three years, like you said.
So, I mean, this was our biggest concern with them going in, was all these issues. So.
Well, fact that they only responded to one.
I know.
But, anyway, whatever, it's fine.
Yeah.
Do you guys want to do it?
Yeah. No, thank you for bringing that idea.
It's not garbage bags or anything, it's their apparatus, it's their pallets and everything.
Okay.
And if they just want to just make the fenced in area, there's a privacy fence, make it bigger and keep everything behind it?
Sure.
Great.
Okay.
I mean, that's all they gotta do.
Yeah. All right, oh yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, old business. So Enhanced Energy Plan, so we had the two hearings that were kind of non-hearings, because nobody showed up. So now it's just, it kicks back to the Planning Commission?
It kicked, you have to vote to move it back to the Planning Commission. At that point, it is becoming an addendum to the zoning regulations, which we're going to discuss further down in the agenda. But, yeah, there just needs to be a vote to send it back.
That's a vote approving it to send it back?
To send it back to the Planning Commission.
Approving it?
Approving it, yeah, that's gotta.
I believe it's approving, I mean, it's.
Back to them.
I didn't even know how to go back to them.
Yes, because it has to go, be attached to the zoning regs as a addendum.
Isn't it attached to the town plan?
I know, I'm confused.
And it was town plan.
We have to.
Yes, it's town plan, which, no, it's town plan, sorry. I was getting confused with some.
I think we either have to approve it or send it back to them, or.
That's what.
Send it back to them for.
I thought once it was approved, it automatically went back. But that was approving the document.
Did anyone have any issues with the plan?
I do.
Okay.
Pages one through six.
I don't even have it.
I do. I have extra copies right over there, I'll go grab them.
Oh, yeah, sure, that'd be great. Well, you can read that out while she's getting those if you'd like.
So, you know, I've been lukewarm on an energy plan anyway, but I've gone along with putting it together for other reasons.
Yep.
But page one through six is like a social program, and I don't believe there's any place in an energy plan for a social program, and there isn't a chance I'm going to vote for anything that has six pages of equity written on it. If it wants to say equal, it's fine, but this is, this to me is an agenda on the first six, and there's not a chance I can feel right about it as an energy plan.
And this was what was written with the help from RRPC?
Jeremy.
Absolutely.
And I know, I came into the Planning Commission at the very tail end of them doing this.
Was this a requirement, though? I think that's what I assumed, that's, because they wouldn't put that in there otherwise.
No, this was, so if you're talking about the first part, those are all statutory requirements.
Right.
Because that was a bonus.
And that's kind of what we knew all along, was there was going to be some stuff that we were going to need to suck up if we were going to have any protections at all. There's been starting, you know, there's, I've seen some other solar projects starting to kind of kick up again in other towns that I'd hate for us to not have any teeth in our town plan to fight them if we so chose.
Point taken, Alicia, but there's an awful lot of other stuff in here that we're going to have to suck up during, in the real energy plan that's honestly unachievable by the way they have it written, and I know that's what they want to have in here, but I'm having a real issue with pages one through six.
No, I don't, again, don't disagree.
The rest of it, I probably could choke down if I had to, but I really think you either got to change it to equal on every statement, or you've just got to eliminate those, because I think it should be an energy plan. That's my comment.
And I know Planning Commission did go back through that when I was there, and they struggled with parts of that, pages one through six as well.
I was there, I was there when they started one through six, and I told them that.
But if I remember correctly, from what RRPC said, is that even with these, the statutory requirements, like with that equity section, it's also just, it's not something that we're, like, we're not held to, like, we're not held to it. It's aspirational, is I guess what I'm trying to say. Like, it's not something that if we don't, we don't necessarily have to have, in my understanding, a follow-through. Do you hear what I'm saying? Again, it's just an aspirational thing, just like our town plan is altogether.
Guidance.
Yes.
It's a guide, yeah.
So I don't think, like, it's not.
Well, we are adopting it, but, anyway, I mean, and I, you know.
So this was, I'm sorry, Dave.
No, that's fine, I mean, I agree.
This was developed by the Planning Commission, and it's had its two public hearings.
It has.
Yep.
It has.
And now it goes back to them?
Because now it has to go into the town plan.
So the way it's going to work is, it's going to be an addendum to the town plan. The town plan will be revised as soon as zoning regulations are done, because we're, have to have the town plan done by, like, February, March, somewhere in there, of 2026. And then, so the whole thing, that addendum plus the town plan are all going to go out for hearings, public hearings, through Planning Commission, through the Select Board and everything before that can be approved. So it will be looked at again before final approval, because it is an addendum to the town plan, which needs to work next.
And I think, I just want to, you know, and it's in here, actually, on page three, the difference between the substantial deference versus the due consideration and the Enhanced Energy Plan does give us stronger legal standing.
Well, I don't think there's any argument over that.
No, I just wanted to, you know, put that out there.
If the first six pages were gone.
Right.
Because what does that even have to do with an energy plan?
It's because somebody got.
Oh, I know, no, and I was, believe me, I was with the Planning Commission long enough to know, but doesn't mean I have to like it.
No, I know. I just remember, it wasn't that long ago that we had, our meetings were full, meeting after meeting after meeting because of these, some of these solar projects that were being proposed for our town, and people wanted us to have strong language to fight the out-of-state solar companies, and this gives us that tool.
Where does equity fight out-of-state?
The equity thing is.
All that language comes down from the state.
It is, and it's, you know.
Garbage.
It made somebody feel good to put that in there, but.
Exactly.
But I would like to make a motion that we approve it so that it can continue on its journey, its legal path to adoption.
I'll start it, we'll get it going.
Any other discussion questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
No.
Okay, now we have no standing for the next Florida company that comes back in.
Revises it. It doesn't mean, doesn't mean you're done.
We can't, it's, the stuff that you don't like in there is from, is state statute.
Went through this before. We didn't put state statute and other stuff together.
All right, I'm just, okay. All right, move on. Town meeting, information sessions, ideas, discussion.
You asked me to put it back.
No, I know, because we, every, every year we talk about how to get more people out at town meeting. We should provide, food has come up, daycare has come up, other assorted things.
I think we should utilize the day camp resource and see if they would be available to watch the children downstairs while town meeting's going on upstairs, because they're not of legal age to vote anyways, most of them.
Right.
And it would give us, give maybe the parents an ability to attend if they knew that there was childcare available.
Yeah.
One of my suggestions for the, they're already on payroll for what little bit it's going to cost us if it gets us more turnout, because there is childcare available.
Yeah, no, I think that's a great idea. And I think providing food is a good idea. And we could do it potluck, some towns do it potluck. We don't, it doesn't necessarily have to be like it's the town paying for it.
Remember, we used to have a break in between school and town?
Yeah.
And we used to have dessert and coffee?
Yeah, yeah.
Why don't we just incorporate a session in the middle where we all stop for a minute, and we have something like that, like we did before?
Yeah.
Because that's when people talked about things.
What if you do it in between, like, general fund and highway, or appropriations and then.
Wherever you think would be good.
Wherever, yeah.
So like an intermission type.
An intermission, like we had before. That was the best part.
Twenty minutes or something like that, just a quick break.
Yeah, no, that's good. So, should we try to make it potluck then? Or should we just, like, just kind of?
Who used to do the desserts before? Was it some group that used to come in and do them, or?
Sure. Do you know?
Maybe we just supply it, go on.
I mean, or we can just, you know.
Was it Ian Young's group?
Yeah.
Oh, was it?
They used to do it, and then.
I don't know, that's the only group I can think of that might have done it.
Parent teachers used to, did it one year, I think. They had stuff there, you know, it's been sometimes different.
Is it worth inviting the scouts to do something in the beginning? I mean, they used to.
They used to do the.
They used to do the flag.
That usually brings in parents.
Representation colors.
That'd be nice, yeah.
You've got to bring them there.
You know?
Yeah.
That was.
Well, and it's good for the kids to see how the process works.
Right, absolutely.
Well, you brought your troop in here, how many times for their government?
Yeah, I know.
Haven't seen that.
No, we haven't seen that in a long time.
I think since you. There's a new Eagle Scout troop here in town that wanted to be more involved, so maybe we can reach out to them. They're helping with the Veterans Day Ceremony this year, so maybe they'd be willing to help out at town meeting and.
We should do the.
Well, yeah, let's reach out to them.
The more things you do like that, the more people.
Well, that's what we used to do.
Right.
Just incorporate it. You bring your kids.
And then I think, too, the reminders, like, I know, the signage has kind of fallen off in the last few years, like, we, our little sandwich board things, I think that last year it went out, like, just the day before, and I think it was just in front of the bank. I don't even think it ended up in front of the, our town hall, right? I can't remember. Yeah, I think we could definitely do a good job putting up signs at least a week before to remind people.
And newsletters from now until.
As well as that, and like Facebook, and, you know.
Right.
All the other avenues that we have, right.
You found it in October.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, and if we're going to have a potluck, give them people a heads up so they can just.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Talk to each other, and, oh, I'm bringing this, or I'll bring that, you know.
Right.
Is there a 4-H group in town still?
Yeah.
Bethany White.
Yep, she does.
Marsh group?
I think it's cows.
Moby still?
I was wondering if they would want to do.
Hamburgers?
Wrong kind of cows. Milkshake, milkshake.
Well, before, it was a lot of desserts.
Yeah.
With coffee or something like that.
Yeah.
I think.
You want finger food type stuff.
It's 6:30 at night.
Yeah.
We'd want some real food for the kids, so, you know what I mean? Like, I always think about the parents who have younger kids that maybe can't.
You want a sugar.
No, they don't love it. We should have some real food, too.
Well, if the little kids are downstairs, we can have them with apple slices and marsh slices, and the adults upstairs are eating the pie and the beans and the.
Maybe the town could provide a couple little plates.
To make sure there's enough stuff.
Make sure there's stuff there, and then if they want, bring desserts.
Okay, yeah, that's a good idea.
I was wondering if the 4-H group might want to do it as a fundraiser.
That's a great idea.
Even if it's only donations.
That's a great idea, yeah.
I can reach out to both Melissa and Bethany and see.
Do the desserts, we could donate to them, yeah.
All right, that sounds good, yeah.
Scouts might want to join in with that, too.
Yeah, I think that's great.
Both have a date.
I know, I'd love to break 100 people coming to town meeting. We usually get around, I think the most in the last, yeah.
It used to be more.
I know. God, you look at pictures in the Historical Society, there'd be people in the balcony, everything would be packed.
When we lost the school budget, we lost a lot of people.
Yeah.
We lost half of them.
Controversy, too.
Well, yeah, yeah.
Right.
Get something controversial on the schedule.
I know, that's good. Very cool. Okay, personal use of social media policy.
I haven't honestly touched this since our last meeting.
Okay.
I would table it.
Yeah, unless somebody has some ideas on how to, I don't even know if I saw it.
It's here, I saw it.
I did see it.
Yeah, I saw one page or something.
Yeah, let's just table it.
Table for now.
That's right here.
Yeah.
I found it, yes.
All right, new business. State SRIN Public Information Meeting with Kayla Anderson from Stan.
At Peterson.
Oh, was it Peterson? I'm sorry. Hi, how's it going?
Hi. Let's see if I can share my screen. You may need a present or do you have a presentation? Do you know how to make a presenter? Something's coming up.
You guys want to know what the acronym is, right?
Right.
I have no idea. Let's ask.
Yes.
Yes.
I have a share button now, so I think that works. Okay. Just going to. Okay, you should be able to see my screen, let me know what you can't.
Is it that, or is it the sidewalk?
It's the sidewalk.
Sidewalk, little sidewalk.
Yes, perfect. All right.
I printed out the slides for you.
This, I am Kayla Peterson, I work with Eric Holling at Stan Tech, and we have been contracted by the state for this statewide improvement project. It is at the Lowthrup Elementary School. So for the town, I have not met any, and you don't believe, let me know if Melanie or Fred are there?
Melanie is, yes.
Melanie's here.
Melanie, okay. And then Chris is our project manager, Eric, not here tonight, and then at the state, we have Derek Kennison, who is the project supervisor. Tonight, we're just reviewing the project development process, the project area, the existing and proposed conditions and design, and what comes next. So for anyone not familiar, this project is based on a grant program from back in 2022. I do not believe the program is still running, but these funds are still available. So there are five or six locations throughout the state that are part of this project. At Lowthrup Elementary School, we are designing a rebuild of the sidewalk at the school and replacing the existing curb. So typically, we go through a project definition, what do we need done, how much is it estimated cost, what are we looking at here throughout the process? Then it goes to funding, how are we getting these funds? We are currently in engineering, we are designing exactly what's going to happen and doing cost estimates, so it can go out to bid and construction. This is another view of the current conditions as of these photos, which I believe were last summer, of the Lowthrup school sidewalk. A lot of the panels are trapped, you've got erosion happening between them, there's troubling hazards, and the curb is falling apart. This is an overview of the land. And I will drag this over here so we can zoom in. So we're really not changing the footprint at all. The sidewalk is just going to get a facelift. It's going to get some new curb, um, a little bit of recreating, so we don't have any drainage issues. That could come up with adjusting any elevations, um, making sure it all ties in nicely. It's it's a facelift, nothing insane going on there. It should look pretty much the same as it did before, just new concrete. Kayla, is it supposed to make the crosswalk, um, handicap accessible onto the sidewalk? Yes, I believe it, it does. And this section, um, right here.
Has ADA too.
Forgive me, it's been a minute since I've done any design work on this project. I went out on paternity leave in the back, so I haven't actually looked at this. So take me a second to refresh my memory. But this should be, um, accessible with ramps and the crosswalk. Anything new we design should be accessible, especially with state funding. So I'm almost positive that this crosswalk, at least where the new construction is concerned, will be accessible because we're not touching the other side, and I honestly don't know what it looks like. I can't speak to that. But where we are doing any work, it will be. That answers your question. So the next steps for this project, um, it's currently in final plans. And it will move along to contract plans after it goes to a state review process. And hopefully out to bid, um, by early next year and complete by next, the end of next summer. So the twenty twenty-six fall start of school, um, it should be complete by. Don't quote me on that, because things always change, but that is the timeline as of right now.
Okay.
And contact information for anybody involved in the project, if you would like it. And I'm happy to take any questions, but.
Selecting members has a question?
Yes.
So you say this is a facelift. Are you tearing out the old broken concrete and putting new concrete? Or are you just resurfacing what's there?
No, the old concrete will come out.
Okay.
And the sub base will be adjusted as needed, um, to lift or lower to correct any, any poor drainage going on. And new concrete will be poured.
So this is grant funds paying for this?
Yep, it is state funded.
And who, who applied?
I did.
All right, all right.
Um, I did with Eric, uh, Ethan Pepin from, um, the planning commission, from the planning commission. It was a long. Yeah, I don't know if there was any more like specific bid project. Um, but yeah, these are state funds that were, that were on other programs, is how Eric.
All right, what I was leading to, has there been any discussion about the, um, the blacktop surface?
Um, no.
If I'm looking at these pictures and having driven through there a number of times, are we going to have to be thinking about, um, fixing up the blacktop?
I don't know. Stacy Farrington, I believe, is on this meeting remotely. Um, she's the principal. Um, this was.
I am, sorry, my dog is barking at something. I'm sorry.
I don't know that, Dan.
Not that I know of. I only know that we have, we're talking about the sidewalk for this project. Um, I don't have the, um, the future plans as far as our facility about the.
So did they have engineers look at it?
Yes.
And they didn't mention what's going to happen when they tear up the, the concrete sidewalk at the, um, at the junction between the blacktop and the concrete? I think we're going to end up looking at some blacktop situation too. Maybe we better start planning on that. Looking into that.
I don't know if that's in the plan.
As far as, um, like the drivable surface, that's kind of outside of our scope of work where this project is concerned. However, as far as, um, like what construction's going to impact. We do design out, um, generally it's two to three feet. I don't have the typical section in front of me to look at. But I do know that we will make sure that the existing pavement is matched into, um, the new curb with some new pavement. It's not gonna, it won't look the same as the existing pavement, obviously, but it will match in. So should not create any drainage issues. I don't, I honestly don't know the condition of your existing driveway right now.
It needs work as well. It's the point I'm trying to make.
Yeah. So if this happens first, and then you guys go down the road later and even mill it out and put a new layer in, you won't even know that there was a patch there. But as far as this project's concerned, our scope of work is very limited to the sidewalk. And that couple feet right next to the curb that will be affected by construction.
Good. I'm glad that it's going to be getting done because it's definitely well, definitely needed. Basically, Melanie can pursue it.
Yeah, thank you, Melanie.
Oh, it's weird that it's, it's because I do the Safe Roads to Schools program.
Yeah, okay.
And that was one of the qualifying factors for this grant with, um, schools that are active in the Safe Roads to Schools. So it's really about, um, accessibility for walkers and bikers to the school.
All right.
We're having a walk to school event next Wednesday morning, if anyone wants to join us.
All right.
What is that?
It's walk and bike to school. We meet at McFlure and then we go down, um, Arch Street across Pleasant. Kids enjoy it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Does anybody else have any questions for Kayla before we let her?
Thank you.
Nope.
All right. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
No problem. And again, um, our emails were on that screen. I'm happy to forward the presentation to somebody from the select board if you guys would like it.
We have it.
You have it.
We have it, thank you. I think Eric had already emailed it to us, so thank you.
Okay, perfect. Yeah, don't hesitate to reach out if anybody has another question to any one of those contacts.
All right, great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Truck body quote.
Hazard McFlure.
Just briefly, this is information, right? We don't have to prove this or anything.
No, no, just so we know what's going on.
I guess, um, does she have to make the same presentation to the full board, like the, our district board?
I don't think so.
Okay.
No, this, sorry, I'm still here.
Yeah, yeah.
Before I even shut the meeting down.
Yeah, yeah.
So no, this was just the public information. There's nothing the select board needs to do, um, for approval of voting.
Yes.
Information for the town.
Okay, great. Everybody's already looking at truck body quotes, okay, moving on. So lots of money and we have to wait a long time before we're going to get one anyways, right?
Chad couldn't be here tonight, but he wanted to at least start the conversation. He has had several conversations with this company. Uh, if we order it now, we will see it in a year and a half in twenty twenty-seven.
Oh, wow. Have we gotten quotes from anybody else?
We discussed that before, didn't we?
We, we haven't found another company that has a comparable product.
Product.
Yeah.
Right, now I'm just, but I was just. Somebody in town something, and then you talk.
I, I have harassed Chad endlessly to try to get three quotes for everything. And he, he, he did do his homework, and this is the only one that we can come up with at this time.
So this is to fit up the truck?
So this is just for the body. The truck will come in the middle of next year. Because those are like six to nine months out, whereas the body's a year and a half. It'll be before December twenty twenty-six when the emission rules change.
The good news is, is that we have the money in.
Yeah, in the highway.
In the highway.
Highway equipment fund to pull the trigger.
But holy spokes, things are getting crazy.
What emissions change?
So we got an email from the state of Vermont that they are, we were supposed to be under stricter emissions things starting in twenty twenty-five. They've relaxed them until December twenty twenty-six. So we're looking.
The state or federal?
State. So we're. Yes, it does. It's almost California's regulation, so.
We know it's wrong.
Um, so we're trying to, we're trying to plan ahead and purchase the vehicle before we have to meet the new emissions. So we're looking at what vehicle or vehicles we need to purchase before December twenty twenty-six so that we don't have to worry about the emissions. For a while.
Well, it'll be, yeah, because they're talking on the federal level of cuts back, so if you aren't going to be able to buy it, what's the state going to do then?
Right. I, we're just, we're trying to be proactive and plan ahead, knowing that
Yeah, no, I, that's.
We have some emissions things that are going to start controlling what we can and can't purchase if we're not careful. This will fit what we can get in the next.
And we're sure this setup's what he wants?
He, he came to me with an original quote, and then he sat down with the manufacturer again and went line by line through it. And this is the quote that is what we need.
What size truck will this be going on?
I knew you were going to ask me that. I think it's a tandem, uh.
Five fifty, right? Isn't this pickup or a?
No, this is a big one.
It's a big one?
This is a big one. So what truck are we getting rid of?
I honestly don't remember.
I, I don't have a problem with this too much, but I think we need to know what truck we're looking at before we approve.
Fourteen foot, fourteen foot side dump.
So fourteen foot, yeah.
I want to say it's the tri-axle, but I know that's not what you guys call them.
Tandems?
Tandem. It's one of the tandems.
Which, which one are we getting? Because the Kenworth's barely new.
Yeah, is it a Western, the Western Star twenty-ten, I think is what it is.
We've had problems with that one, correct?
I don't think we use it very often.
Could we just get a clarification on that before we get on this road?
Yeah.
I don't have a problem with this, but.
Right.
Let's just make sure we're.
We know what is going on.
Yeah.
I'm pretty sure it's the Western Star that we have.
Two thousand and ten.
It's a twenty-ten and I.
Yeah, because fourteen foot's not going to fit on a five fifty.
No.
No.
And I knew it was a big, I knew it was a big truck, but I'm pretty sure it's our Western Star that's a twenty-ten.
And I see the quote's valid to twelve eleven.
Yep, so we have time.
So we have another meeting, no problem.
So we wanted you to have the sticker shock and have time to absorb it and then bring it back to the next meeting.
Tell Chad we appreciate that, yeah. We better get it ordered.
So we're classifying that one as tabled? Yep.
All right, five-year local hazard mitigation plan discussion.
So I am probably going to make our EMD not very happy with me, and I'm okay with that. I have been asking him for months to set up a meeting because we have our five-year, it's called a LEMP, that is due to be renewed. And I would really like it to be a cohesive thing that is up to standards. I have checked with Maggie O'Brien. I have talked to, I think his name is Bill Jones at Vermont Emergency Management. Many things have changed in the last five years for what needs to be included in the LEMP. Tim thinks that we should be able to do it on our own. I'm not comfortable with that, and he keeps pushing off when we should meet. I do have a team, um, started to be assembled that would like to help with this. I have Bill Hempel, Sean Hendy, Chad Ujier, myself, Tim, um, so that we have all of our emergency.
Is Steve still involved?
Steve is our E M.
Is that, he was like the, the.
He's an assistant, but I, I haven't heard from him at all. And according to Maggie, neither one has been attending any of the emergency management trainings that are held through Regional Planning Commission for the last year. You and I did, yes. They did not. I, I've attended a couple of them when I can. The problem is, a lot of times they're right during our select board meetings. So that's something we should probably discuss when it's time for renewals. Um, my concern is, as you can tell by the letter from Maggie O'Brien saying, hey, it's time to start thinking about this. If we don't do it and do it right, our E R A F is going to go from seventeen point five down to seven point five percent.
So what are the things that we need to change from our current?
I am not a hundred percent sure on that because I haven't been around long enough in the E M, the emergency management stuff. I know that we have to add dams, we have to add, uh, daycares, we have to add, yeah. And there's like these other bits and pieces, but I don't know them all. And I asked Maggie if there was a template so that we could just kind of walk through it.
Right.
And she said, not really. They've tried to do a template, but there's not a good template. There is a grant that is available that we can apply for if we want to try to help us with this, um, LEMP sheet. She said she's willing to help me write the grant to see if we can get it to help pay for the LEMP. Otherwise, it's between eight and ten thousand dollars to have regional help us with it. For like full-blown help us with it. My concern is, I don't know enough about it. And our gentlemen haven't been attending the meetings, so I'm not sure how versed they are or where we can get the information.
So since the.
He was going to reach out, Tim was going to reach out to Bill Jones, but I haven't heard from him since that email.
No, it says that the towns can apply for up to thirty thousand and multi-towns can apply for up to forty-five. I wonder, would it make sense for us to team up with another town, like Chittenden? I mean.
Chittenden's almost done with theirs. Um, if you look, Poltoni's working on theirs. I think Poltoni and Poltoni Village are ones.
Oh.
Because if you look at this.
I didn't really realize what that was, okay.
It has the E R A F summary, but also says when their LEMPs.
Yep, okay.
Are good through. You know, the, the, the first column, the current one is our one-year one, and then the LEMP approved is the five-year plan.
No, we should, I mean, it's two way now, but then I, I guess, but we should have worked with Chittenden, I mean, considering we, we're all tied in with them anyways with our emergency management stuff because of the dam.
Damn, yep.
So you said it was going to be eight to ten thousand for regional to help us? That's what we have to pay them?
Or are we trying to get a?
I think we'd want to apply for a grant if we're going to have to do that, right?
Chell out that, yeah.
I, I just, I don't.
It doesn't seem like it's something we could do on our own.
I personally don't feel comfortable trying to navigate it on our own. I.
Well, not if they can't give us a list of what we have to do.
No, and I'm still waiting for Tim. I've been going back and forth with him on this, and I haven't heard anything from him from my email, I don't know, two weeks ago, asking him to reach out to Bill Jones and see if Bill has a list of what needs to be included in there. I haven't heard it from him since.
Isn't this, because back, stating myself, when I was on the planning commission, if we had subdivision rules, is that part of this too? Because once we adopted subdivision, you got a better rate on this, I believe, correct? Back then, back six, eight years ago?
I'm not sure on that. I know our subdivisions we have.
Some reason I don't remember that.
I, I don't think.
Subdivisions, if something was zoning.
It wasn't tied into that one?
I don't think so.
There was something that it was tied into.
It's tied, tied into your zoning regulations and that.
No, it was.
I, I know, you are talking about another program that you had to have one to have the other.
Yes, and you got a lot better rate if you had one, but I don't remember.
I don't remember the two programs. I, I, no, I don't think.
Well, I think it'd be logical for him to apply for that grant, don't you? I mean, we, we can't wait for the response and just copy him in.
Yeah.
That it's being done.
Yeah.
But I think it's logical to do it.
Yeah.
Do you need a motion?
I don't think we, don't think so.
Nope.
I can just make a statement that the board agrees.
Yeah, too. All right, uh, cat estimate for grader, our favorite recent topic.
That was a fun meeting.
Oh, man.
Do I start with replace crankshaft rear seal? That has been done according to Chad.
Well, it sounds like it needs to be done.
Yeah, it had to be done, right?
That was a need. Uh, the replace floodlight, he thinks we can just do that in-house, so we don't need them to do it. The replacing the battery box support, he said that's not necessary. Replace fuel gauge, he said to skip it. They check it every morning before they go out. He said they're good with that. Uh, replace seals and or gasket right rear wheel hub assembly. He says they need that. Replace seals and or gasket right rear differential. They need that one. Replace airline pipe. They need that one. The reconditioning of the front ripper lift cylinder. He says it's not necessary. They don't use that part of the grader. Um, he said the reshimming of the circle assembly, that we can skip it for now. And remove and install side shift cylinder. He said not. And remove and install side shift cylinder, he said not necessary now. And replacing seals and/or gasket on that side shift cylinder is not necessary now.
Okay.
But I want to...
What is the total of what we need?
I want to see the total, hold on.
Eighty-one seventy-five.
There's one here that I'm confused about. Can't figure out where the first part of it is. Where's page? One.
Two that it needs. That's a need.
All right, we're different.
Have to skip.
Is it like sixteen?
Fifty-one eighty.
So I got that fifty-one eighty plus twenty-five hundred plus...
Sixteen thousand.
Eighty-one.
Plus eighty-one.
Yep, so...
And you also have six hundred and twenty-eight dollars and twenty-five cents.
Sixteen thousand, yep.
Sorry, I was looking for my calculator.
I didn't hear what you said, but sure.
It's very impressive.
I know.
I was looking for my calculator.
The only rep-a-mop piller that can do that math, is that what you said? Just want to clarify what you said.
Yeah, yeah, that was it. So, and I looked through, because Chad, I guess it was Chad, maybe it was Ann, sent the list of repairs that were made last winter on there, and there was nothing, didn't appear they got anywhere near that rear main oil seal.
No.
There was nothing in there about it, so...
So, what is this exactly?
All right, so, yeah.
It must come from another page.
It comes from page... Oh, it comes from page four. Okay, where's four? Well, it's our, yeah.
So what's it, what's it start with?
Seals or gasket right rear differential.
Oh, it's right there.
Yeah.
It's right here.
Yeah.
It goes to there, all right. So that's why I'm confused.
Took me a minute to figure that out.
So there's your parts, there's your labor, okay.
Yeah.
Sixteen thousand four hundred and fifty dollars and eighteen cents is what the need is. Add up just the needs.
So I'll put a motion forward to go with the needs as outlined by Chad for the amount of sixteen thousand.
Sixteen thousand four hundred and fifty dollars and eighteen cents.
As she says.
You want to stick with that dollar amount?
I know, is there going to be, possibly be any change?
Yeah, it might be a change.
Up to seventeen thousand.
That's what I was going to say.
How's that?
That I will second.
Okay, any further discussion?
Yeah, are they doing, is Caterpillar doing the service in our shop?
No.
They're going to transport?
It, it's already been transported there.
Already up there.
It's already up there. So if any of this other work needs to be done, should we consider some of it, even if it's not needed, so we don't have to pay another transport? Because you're probably talking a thousand bucks anyway.
I don't have them up and back.
Well, that's a good point.
According to Chad, he didn't...
He didn't think anything else was...
And he said the one little thing they can do in-house.
Done.
Okay, cool. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And we pose. Um, errors and emissions, release of rights. There were just three, right?
Yep.
And these are just, uh...
One was just a name.
One's a name change. One is a minimal value change based on combining two with contiguous, contiguous acreage. And then one is a removal of a mobile home and shed. I'll, you'll read the note on the mobile home.
Yeah, I read, I read that, yeah. I don't see any issue with it.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, uh, planning commission recommendation for change in our RPC delegate assignments?
So Donna Wilson has been our delegate, and I've been the alternate. And Donna came to me and asked if I would be the delegate and she be the alternate. She's attended one meeting since I've been going to them, and I've attended all of them.
Okay.
So the planning commission agreed to it, and I told them I'd bring them.
I'm just worried you're getting too much on your plate. I would like to see somebody else on the planning commission be the primary and you the second. I'm not, not saying you're not qualified or anything else. I'm just worried you're going to get too much on your plate and then...
How do, how do you feel about it? I mean, you've been going quite often.
I've been going, I don't mind those meetings. They're, actually, I find them very informative because planning commission is nothing that's in my wheelhouse, so I've learned a lot in a short amount of time. But Devon has had the same concerns because they've tried sucking me into stuff, and he's like, she's not touchable.
No, I think you've got, personally, and I'm not speaking, I just think personally, you've got enough on your plate. If we could, if you're alternate, that's fine, so you don't have to go every meeting. But I'm just, I don't want you burning out.
Is that, is it, well, I guess if she's wanting to switch, it might be a long-term thing. Because she used to go, Donna used to go to every single one.
And she kind of, I don't know what changed.
Yeah, okay.
I gotta, I gotta agree with David. Usually, the primary person's on the planning commission. I think one of the board members needs to be on it.
I guess that makes sense.
And I, just, and I believe the time factor, I don't want you to get...
Was anybody on, did anyone express any interest on?
Who's on that?
Rick Conway, Kevin Blow, Mike Norris, Rob Spenceley, Donna Wilson, Gordon Fox, and Nancy Godro is your alternate. And, and Chuckie Charbonneau, sorry. I have to go in the order in which they sit.
Are you going to every meeting with them?
Planning commission, yes.
I, I think you should go back and say the board really would like someone from the commission to be the primary.
I can do that.
And see if we can get somebody to step up.
I mean, if we can't, you know, but...
Then we might have to do something.
And I don't mind doing it until, we usually reevaluate in March anyways. So even if it's only until then and then we figure it out, but I will let them know that they need to find someone within.
Well, yeah, and, well, and with that, if they go to a queue and find it's not for them, then when we reevaluate, you know, you'll know it's not them, and we've got to find somebody else.
On that, Dave, I, I just have a question. Can that be listed like the board just did with the animal control being the police department? Can it be listed as planning commission members? And then they take, you'll take January, February, March, April?
Uh...
Try delegates to there?
You could, it's, as, as somebody who was there for...
Yeah, that's why I'm asking the question to see if...
For a while. You probably could do that, but it's hard.
Or do it quarterly, like you'll go quarter one.
Yeah, but it's, you...
There's too many projects.
No, you, you've got to learn who you're working with and how you work with them and whatever. So it's not just that you go to the meeting and, you know, you've got to understand how it works. And you kind of need to be there for a while, especially if you want to enact any change there. You've got to know, and this is politics.
Who's on your corner, yeah.
Who's on your side, who isn't, and the players, and so...
See, I'm just thinking of ways to maybe interest others.
Every month would be in the best interest of the town of Pittsburgh. Just my opinion.
That's why I'm asking the question, to see if there'd be some, you know, enticement. You know, I can't commit to every meeting, but I could commit to every sixth or whatever, you know, from the membership side.
I think that would be hard with that board. Tac, tac would be easier than...
But that, that's why I'm asking, so that...
And there's, there's actually, there's elected positions on that board, too. So if we wanted to take any of those, you can have somebody change in every meeting. So, you know...
I know, and it really, it shouldn't be difficult for somebody to do, they're, they're, most people go via Zoom.
It's a fifty-fifty split.
Is it?
Yep.
It's been a while, I guess, since that's gone by.
Of course, it was, everybody was there pretty much, but, I mean, we did Zoom during COVID, but then it went back.
I Zoomed the last meeting because I was up at J-Peak for the GFOA conference. I find it better in person so that I can actually...
Oh, it's a lot better in person.
It's gonna be food.
Yeah, pizza.
Yeah, you can get food, yeah. And it's not a bad, it's usually a couple hours and it's over.
Yeah, no, they're pretty moving.
I enjoyed doing it till it just became too much.
Yeah.
I mean, if it wasn't too much, I'd still be doing it, but it's still with this.
I've learned a lot in a short amount of time.
Oh, yeah.
Through it.
Well, let's kind of keep this, uh, we'll table this as well, just like, yeah, bring that back to the planning commission. See if one of them will be happy to do that. Speaking of planning commission, grant extension, I really do not want to do that.
So, I put, I put that on the agenda because I was thinking we were going to have to. And then you're going to see that I gave you tonight a proposed timeline.
I see that.
This, I've spent some time on this the last few days. I believe we have it so that the planning commission is willing to meet Thursday, November thirteenth, to make this all work.
Okay.
We just need to make sure, and I need, I needed to make sure with the select board that you are okay that we have the public hearing for the select board on Wednesday, December third, because that's the only hearing that you have to hold for this.
Yep, okay.
Because they're going...
What document are you looking at, Ann?
So I put it on your table tonight. It looks like this.
So Donna needs all your stuff.
Yeah.
Here it is, right here.
I'm sorry. So, um, it's a proposed timeline, Logan, because I sent Logan an email saying, this is what I want to do. How can we get there with the holidays involved? Because you have both Thanksgiving and Christmas, and we wanted to get it done before December thirty-first so that we have the full and don't have to come up with a ten percent match. So, um, this is what we came up with to avoid Thanksgiving. I have emailed the planning commission Thursday, November thirteenth. I believe I have a quorum that we'll be able to meet that night with planning commission from the responses I've received so far. So this should be able to work, and we should not need a grant extension. If we do, at the very last minute, need one, this Jenny Lavoy that you see the email back and forth between her and I, she's willing to help me if it comes down to it. But we think if we can stick to this plan, which Logan is okay with and the planning commission has received this plan, we should be good.
It's really all about the hearings right now, right, basically?
Go ahead.
That's all I needed to know, it's you.
I just, so what is, just because, again, you said you think you've got a quorum. So what is the drop dead date for getting the extension?
For the extension on them, if I, if I need to extend the...
If somebody gets, I mean, if you've got, you know, you need four people for a quorum, and one of them's definitely ill and can't make it, and you don't have it, is that going to be too late?
It's going to be too late. We will need one. I have until, I believe it's December fifteenth, to do an, a, a extension on this grant.
So December fifteenth is the drop dead date, so ninety percent of this will be done by then.
All of it will be done before December fifteenth, unless the wheels fall off the bus.
So you got, you got a two-week wiggle room roughly, or...
We have a two-week wiggle room in case right now. We, Logan originally set it up, so it was going to be a much tighter schedule, but he had the planning commission meeting on Thanksgiving, and I said, Logan, we love the town, but we don't love it quite that much. So let's, can we try to move it up two weeks to be the middle of November, so we're not near the holiday? And then he, that's why it says version two at the top. So amend it down through so that we can actually finish at the beginning of December, and that gives me time to get everything together and get it to the grant people before the due date.
I commend you, Ann, for putting this together.
Yep, I mean, I guess the other, the other, another question, can I see that?
Yeah, sure.
Can I see my paperback?
Yeah.
Thank you. Uh, so, now, September twenty-ninth, you've got regional planning prepare a draft zoning amendment. So are they doing, redoing our zoning for us?
So we, so...
Or are they just changing certain parts?
We have gone through the planning commission, when I say we. The planning commission has gone through the entire zoning regulations from page zero to...
Whatever.
Through the definitions pages.
Yep.
And this will include the new subdivision regulations on the back as an addendum. We've already done the subdivision. We didn't reopen that because we just did them. So we've gone page by page. Logan has three small things that we're going to circle back to next meeting, finalize those three things. We think we know what, we gave Logan an idea of what we think needs to be done with those three. We're going to circle back, make sure we're right. Logan, in the meantime, is drafting all the changes that we did at the last meeting because we did like forty pages of the bylaws the last meeting.
So that's this RRPC prepared draft, so, okay.
So it, so Logan went...
That's all I needed to know.
No, Logan went page by page with us. We had got comments from a couple of the planning commission members and Jeff of changes they wanted to see, which led to further discussion on a couple of parts. So there are, there have been touches throughout the entire document for changes, most of them, some small. But that's what Logan's referring to on preparing draft zoning amendment. He's already done it. It's just finalizing it, what we discussed at the last meeting.
That's fine.
Yep.
Okay, I'm good on that?
Good.
All right, FY twenty-twenty-seven budget.
So I threw the first twenty-two pages at you. This is a, I'm going to warn you, this is a very, it looks like this, it's a multi-column thing that I put at your desk right before the meeting started.
Yep, got it.
I have not had a chance to put even all of the general in yet, so this is a very rough draft, only through part of the departments. So it's something for you to look at. I will be, we're supposed to be getting all of our insurance quotes and everything shortly here, so I can revise. But this gives you the first few departments for you guys to look over for comments.
Very cool.
And I should have the rest of it before our next meeting. I have them on my desk on handwritten, but not typed in, yeah.
Nope, this is a good start.
And during town fair next week, we'll get some of the rates then, too, that we're waiting for.
All right, any questions on the orders?
Uh, yep. Southworth Milton, fifty-three hundred and twenty-six dollars. Engine repair.
So that was for the grader when they came down initially to...
Their initial stop?
That was their initial, two stops.
Uh, page two of the four.
Right here. It says, customer complaint leaking engine oil result in damage, leaking transmission differential oil and engine oil caused a failure, missing bolt holding the differential valve onto the differential. Customer was scheduled to bring their machine into the Richmond shop to determine the engine oil leak. Repair process comments, August fifteenth. Technician arrived on site and inspected the machine prior to service. The hydraulic oil was leaking out the top of the tank to, out of the fill cap. Recommended to the customer to adjust level as needed, clean the oil with the machine, top off the rest of the fluids, and retest. Ordered a new hydraulic tank cap if needed. It looked crooked when it was on the tank. August twenty-second, technician arrived on site and inspected machine prior to service, checked fluids and started the machine. The transmission oil level was five to six inches high with the machine at low idle and neutral. Hydraulic oil level was still over full. Found that there was differential transmission oil leaking from the differential lock valve at the top of the differential. Ordered necessary parts. August twenty-sixth, technician arrived on site and inspected the machine prior to service. Customer has taken the park brake actuator off themselves to aid in our repair. The transmission guard is stuck and will not lower. Removed the differential lock valve and disassembled, cleaned and resealed in reverse order. Installed the valve back into the machine. I replaced the missing bolt, the line and O-rings, valve portion that threads into the housing. Upstated and required adding a grounding wire, and then they came back.
So it's three, three stops?
Four.
Four.
Fifteenth, twenty-second, twenty-sixth, and September fifth.
And so most of that's labor hours, is that what I'm getting out of this? Because I haven't heard any big parts.
Yes.
So what's the labor breakdown?
Labor, um, I don't know how they broke it down, but the first one is two thousand three hundred and twenty-two dollars. The traveling and mileage. Traveling is nine hundred and forty-four dollars, and then the mileage, they have almost a thousand dollars or a little over a thousand dollars.
For mileage?
For mileage.
So you paid two grand for them to drive around and see us?
Two thousand three hundred and twenty-five, twenty-five. Parts is three hundred and ninety-five dollars sixty-eight cents. Labor is three thousand two hundred and sixty... Labor is three thousand two hundred and sixty-six dollars and miscellaneous, which is travel and whatever, sixteen, sixty-four, thirty-eight.
I'd like a copy of that, Anne, please. I'd like a copy too. And.
Make it three.
What did, uh, this is the Grader, am I right?
Yes.
Correct, yes.
Isn't this the machine that Nado worked on last year?
Yes.
Didn't he work on the transmission?
I don't believe so. No, this mostly was the oil pan and resealing some of the hydraulic.
Hydraulics too.
That long? Twitter.
Evidently.
Right, so he didn't touch the transmission or the?
I didn't see any of that, trying to figure where that.
Did you send that in or?
I sent it an email to you guys, I did not put it in the packets.
Right. The breakdown from him? The breakdown, yep. Yeah, it was an email. It was an email. Uh, I went, it was hard to read, but I went through it because I was looking for that rear main oil seal and there was nothing about that, so, um.
Are you looking for that, I'm just gonna?
Wouldn't it be cheaper to have your own mechanic? Just?
And we have one for some stuff, but I guess not for everything.
No, it wouldn't be.
Not necessarily.
We do have, I mean, there is some, we do have, uh, somebody on the.
The guys can do quite a bit themselves.
Yeah, but not this, not the Grader stuff, I guess.
No, Grader is out of their wheelhouse. They do, I would say probably eighty-five to ninety percent, they do do in-house what they can.
They're not equipped to break that, so. Not way you need.
Well, you don't always, you don't always need to use the dealership. That's probably the, like Chad and I were talking about it, you know, some things need to be done by the dealership, other things can be done by jobbers. But I think the jobber we had, I'm not, I'm not convinced here. But anyway. You want to know what was done with?
No, I, I saw that too. I couldn't remember if he did have to break that apart, which might have resulted in this issue is what I thought.
First, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd like a copy of that too, Anne.
Yep.
And the only other question I had was on the fuel for patrol car at nineteen hundred dollars. I think that's pretty regular about what it ends up, right? That's what I've been seeing of that. I don't follow it, so.
Um, hold on a second.
That's usually about what we are, or is that a limited?
So police, if you look at patrol car fuel and maintenance, which we've had quite a bit of.
Oh, so the maintenance is on that too?
On EQ one, uh, if you look on the budget line, um, in our budget, we're at thirty-six percent. The other day before some maintenance got put on there, we were right on target at twenty-three or twenty-four percent, which would be fuel and any maintenance up until that point, so we're.
And it runs through that card, the maintenance does?
No, but it's on the same line in the budget.
Ah, okay.
So, um, we were right on target until EQ one needed a bunch of repairs.
Okay, so what I'm looking at here is just fuel?
That's just fuel if it says wax card.
But we're running on target for fuel?
We are on target.
Okay, that's the only question. That's all I got.
Okay.
All right, we can start signing those.
And there's one in here that says, um, we should, um, Dave, because somehow it got missed at our last meeting being signed.
Oh.
Um, even though you guys approved it.
Okay.
Yeah, I had one question on something we put in here. Go over. It was a letter from the state in regards to water runoff on the bridge.
Yes, so I just wanted people to be aware, um, and I actually had a subsequent conversation with, I'm going to get Stephanie, um, at V-Trans about that. Belden sent me an email saying that they were going to need to close Arch Street either the week of October sixth or the week of, um, October thirteenth. And Stephanie said they, that Belden did not notify her yet, so she was going to reach out to them. So I am betting it's going to be the week of October thirteenth after having a conversation with, um, Stephanie from V-Trans. That's going to need to have, um, no, this is the one. No, this one is going to have to have a signature when we did it. Oh, okay. And I'll take the other one.
All right.
Well, this one needs to have this page first because of the address, so.
There's something that we saw. Yep.
No, the one. That's coming.
No, they blocked us out on that.
It's got a, um, post-it note on it, Dan.
This is the one that's just the.
Okay, I'll do that.
Just because I got dingy. It sounds silly, but.
Yep, I'll take that one.
Thank you.
Not when you sign, not when you don't.
I was just trying to get it done.
Not when you don't.
I was trying to get mine done too last week lethargically. Okay, well, the recess, select board, it opened up as water and sewer commission. A drought conservation notice.
So I wanted you all to be aware that in the billing that just went out, we did put a little notice saying that we're asking people to start conserving water by not washing their cars or watering their lawns, that kind of thing. We have adequate water supply now, uh, we would just like to start conservation efforts. We are finding that Amia is drawing a substantial amount of water because their pools or whatever they had have been affected by the drought, so they're drawing more water than normal. And we're starting to notice pressure changes on this end of town. Sean is working on, um, changing levels with the tanks for the Florence tank. We have been using the Florence well as well, uh, the last month to help try to regulate things. Um, but we're just trying to take proactive measures, so, uh, on the, so that's why people are going to see in their bills a slip of paper that says, please, we, I want to tell people, yes, we have plenty of water right now. We just want to.
Be conscious of, yeah.
Be conscious of the fact that there are many towns, I'm getting emails, that many towns are starting to have a water supply issue and we would rather not be one of them.
Yeah, no, for sure.
Um.
Sean said the overflow stayed pretty steady up there.
It has so far. Yep.
There is drought help for empty wells?
So, um, I gave you some emails from Sean that he went back and forth with the state. There, um, in that is a list of four haulers, so if people need water hauled to them, this is the list, approved list that the state of Vermont, um, has advised us to give out.
Yep, okay.
Um, if the town of Pittsburgh wanted to be able to provide water, I have the water and sewer commission notes. I did go over these with Sean, the only, um, because I said, we can either do potable water or not potable water, so drinkable or not drinkable. Um, if we do drinkable, we need to get new hoses because ours are old. Um, we just want to make sure there's no.
Yeah.
Anything built in them. And this can be done at the water plant and we have a meter there to calculate water flows and gallons and all of that. If we do non-potable water, we can use the hoses we have and we can fill off. I said the doghouse at the fire station is the doghouse at the water plant. I messed that one up. Um, but Sean's and my concerns are how do we charge for it? What rates would we want to charge? Can we do a check only and payment due at time of pickup? Sean wants to do appointment only so that he knows when people are coming and then if you want certain types of containers and if you'd want a liability waiver people would sign so that the town is not liable. Those were some of our concerns, so we said we'd bring, before we got to a dire situation, we know that there are, um, at least three or four people in town that their wells have gone dry. So it's a conversation that I'm sure we're going to get more people if this drought continues. So this is something we wanted you to start thinking about and how we might, as a town, want to react to it.
So do you think this is something we should put in place by the next meeting or the meeting after? What's your thoughts?
I think we need to put it in place one way or the other. I mean, this drought, maybe because winter's coming, might get better, but who's to say next year's not going to be, we're not going to be in the same situation. And I would like a policy and procedure in place, so if this does happen again, we know how to proactively approach it. If somebody calls us and says, my wells run dry, this is the steps we can take.
That's logical.
Um, so I just don't know how you want to handle it. Do you want to do it on a small scale or bigger scale or just say, we can't do this, here's the list of four haulers?
So what are you, you're thinking just people coming and getting ten, fifteen gallons of water?
It could be people coming and getting ten or fifteen gallons. It could also be people if they have like the, I'm going to call them sap tank buckets because that's what I know them as. The big plastic buckets. If they have one of those and want that to be filled because if they have livestock or if they want to be able to.
Actually, one of the people that had contacted me has two sixty-five gallon totes that he wanted filled.
Yeah.
So.
I don't think we want to be in the business of providing people with containers. That clearly don't want to be that. You got to bring your own.
But we wanted to know, you know, do we only want to fill certain types of containers? Or if, you know, if they're, say, water or, you know? I, I don't know, I'd have to research what other towns are doing. I don't know what other towns are doing right now. Sean and I have both been kind of tag teaming this, um.
I should see if Sean wants to have a, a minimum so he's not filling up five gallons.
Hmm.
Right. And then, uh, he does have a way of metering it right there?
He does. He has a meter.
Well, I think we should put that, and I think Sean should decide, uh, when do we stop doing that? You know, what overflow point are we at with our springs where we say, you know, we're not doing this anymore? Because we don't want to cut us short. I would say those are two things I could think of. Insurance waiver is a must to buy for us. Yep, and I would suggest we get hoses, no matter whether we're filling potable or not potable, we get good enough hoses for potable because that's, I mean, that's kind of a no-brainer to me. Just in case something happens. Well, exactly, in case somebody tells you, oh, no, I'm just feeding my cows with it and their kids go out and drink it not knowing, and it comes back to our hoses, I mean. Long as, uh, I, I was going to say, as long as it's a reasonable, you know, amount for hoses.
Are these regularly three-quarter or one-inch hoses or what?
I honestly.
It's going to take a long time to fill these sixty-five gallon containers with a.
I think they're, I think they're a bigger diameter, but I will get information.
It just the amount of what we're going to spend on them, so we know. Right, yeah. But you're right, Dave, we should have good ones anyway, in case we need it for, we need it for the town offices or something, we should have it.
Okay. I'll, I will do some more research and I'll have Sean help me research and we'll see what others are doing as well so we can kind of be in the same ballpark.
Same ballpark, yep. Makes sense.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Can the names of the water haulers be like put in the town newsletter or something? Because I know people who are out of water that probably don't call the town office because they're out of water because they routinely run out of water. But I have heard like.
I can give you this one, but if you guys.
I don't need it personally, but I just feel like if it was published.
Newsletter and the website?
I can put it on the website.
Yeah, on the website.
Website, yeah. Yep, put it on the website. None of them are very close to here, so.
No, they are.
It's not going to be cheap. You used to have.
Nobody goes buying. Fish.
Used to be.
Two of them right here in the hall.
Oh, yeah.
The only closest one is that Stockbridge.
Yep, Stockbridge is the closest.
That's not really close.
No, it's not.
They're not going to buzz over but a big load.
Yeah, but that'll be good to have on the website, that was a great idea. Um, okay, um, and Patley Drive replacements.
So we've had two water breaks in a week on Patley Drive.
Oh.
Sean was hoping to defer replacing the water line. He and I have had a long conversation about it. We're afraid that it is not going to hold up much longer and we don't want to get to the middle of winter and have a water line break and have to be chipping through frost. He said the parts to be able to do the replacement for the line is about ten thousand dollars, between ten and twelve. Uh, there's going to be an excavator rental. Our, our employees can do it in-house between Highway and Sean. Um, he's estimating it'll be approximately twenty thousand dollars to do the water line replacement with the equipment rental and the, um.
Parts.
Parts. And I told him I wanted the board aware of it. I didn't want to just say, yeah, we can go spend twenty thousand dollars, even though I do believe that we keep, it's, you know, we have a break here and then it's a break not that far from it.
No, it's been on our radar for a while, that's because we talked about it with the ARPA money, we just didn't, we didn't, yeah, so no, that's.
Yeah, that's right, it was on that.
It was, and Sean, Sean and I have been trying to limp it along, but I, my big fear is that there's going to be a big break.
How many users are on that?
I honestly, I was thinking five or six.
Five or six.
That's right over here.
So it's off from, it's off from Toronto.
Off Toronto.
Oh.
Patley Drive is right over here.
You think it's.
There's six.
I, I think it's about six, maybe.
That's easy digging there, it's all.
Yeah, and it's all.
And it's narrow, we would give the, um, all of the property owners or renters or whatever they are there, we would give them hand notices a week before, letting them know that it's going to be occurring and that they may want to find alternative parking spots.
So Sean's thoughts are, we're on borrowed time with that section right now?
Yeah.
What's going on?
He talked to me about it yesterday, the other day.
You trying to do the repair this year?
He would like to do it as soon as possible before the weather turns cold. Because I told him, I said, it's going to happen either during the holidays or when we have two feet of frost in the ground and we're going to have to try chiseling through it.
Is that money in the water account or we have to pull it out in general?
We have, I believe, enough in the water repairs, maintenance for it.
So is that paved road or dirt road?
Dirt.
Yeah, that's not, Alan's a dirt road.
Dirt road, dirt driveways?
Yep.
Okay, so we're not. That's it, just the. Not dealing with that. Well, no, I mean, that's. That's dirt, yeah. There's a concern.
Carl dirt.
Okay.
Well, I think it should be done.
Like I said, this, this needed to be done like five, six years ago.
Twice in two weeks. This, this will be another ten thousand dollars if it happens during the winter. So we don't want.
Or more.
Well, I'm just saying.
Yeah, let's get it done.
I'm going to, I'll motion to go ahead and make that prepare.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Yep. All right, let's come out of water and sewer commission and open up as liquor board. Uh, Hilltop is, yeah, they're going to be upstairs, Stories Chili Cookoff.
I don't have the paperwork for it, we know it's coming up.
Yep.
Uh, Dolores is working with the state of Vermont to be able to get into the liquor board information. Um, we're trying to be proactive on this, our next meeting is three days before the event.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
So I put it on the agenda, knowing I don't have the paperwork, but if.
Well, that's fine, I mean, we've given them.
Yeah. So that's been a good deal.
Good thing, so.
Motion to approve.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so come out of board, open back up into, um, select board and, um, if there is nothing else, I would take a motion to go into executive session in accordance with one VSA three thirteen A, where premature general public knowledge would clearly place the municipality or person involved at a substantial disadvantage to discuss the appointment, employment or evaluation of a public officer or employee, provided their public body must make the final hiring or appointment decision and explain its reasons for the decision and open meeting one VSA three thirteen A three to include the interim town manager.
So I'll move.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, that ends our open conference meeting, thank you.